All right, good evening. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, December 3rd. It's 7:03 PM. This is the full meeting of the regular City Council. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Oh, I'm sorry. I just got excited for that. The clerk will call the roll. We love the pledge, but we love the roll call first.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Givner?
Here.
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
McGrath Smith?
Here.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Here.
Acasio?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Now, stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the City Council.
And all its people.
Thank you, everyone. All right, so, good evening. We have a relatively short agenda, but I know that we do have some things to discuss. But Counselor Anderson Burgos, before we get started, you wanted to have a moment?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Madam President. So I'd like to give a moment of silence to Gloria Delude. She's known me since I was a child and she was my support system. And I just found out that she had passed away November 17th. Again, she was one of my biggest support systems and she's no longer with us. She is in spirit, but I just wanna give a moment of silence for her. Please, thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see who's going first tonight. And I don't believe... Counselor McGrath Smith will be... Her name was pulled, so she'll be voting first tonight. And I don't see anyone signed up for public comment in council chambers. And I'm not seeing any hands raised on Zoom. So with that...
Should we do our remote participation motion?
Yes, we definitely should, Counselor.
I believe you have the script.
I sure do. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to take a roll call vote that, for the purposes of this meeting, would be applicable to all motions to receive, refer items to committee, remove items from the table, place items on the table, package items together, comply with items, or suspend the rules unless there is objection.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So going through the agenda tonight, I haven't heard from anyone on item one. If this is just gonna stay laid on the table for now, I'll move forward unless I hear otherwise. Let's see, item two was filed by Mayor Joshua Garcia, a letter appointing Beverlin Blanchard of 46 St. Colby Drive to serve on the Library Board of Directors.
Public service?
Be received and sent to public service?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and send to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Item three is from the mayor, appointing Thomas Gilchrist of 26 Dunn Avenue to the Library Board of Directors.
Public service?
Be received and sent to public service?
Send to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Item four is the minutes from the November 7th and November 19th meeting.
Be received?
Motion to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Receive, accept, and approve.
Thank you. Receive, accept, and approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five is a communication from Don Sanders regarding the MIFA Victory Theater Project.
DGR.
Received?
Received and sent to DGR.
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Item six is from Hedic, the meeting minutes of May 16th.
Received?
Motion to receive. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I'll second that, but it says under discussion.
Sure, under discussion.
I strongly encourage you to read the minutes, especially where it refers to an executive session, which I'm waiting to... Which we... Those minutes are available relative to the conveyance for the acreage behind Station 5, the Widing Farms Road. The... I'm waiting for a copy of the contract. I know Jeff is working on that for me. So I'm assuming that that'll be dispersed to all members of his body and so you can be aware of what the plan is for the volleyball people. So I thought you might be interested in knowing that. So that's from our friends at Hedic that went ahead and made a contract. But there's a long way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other... Yes, Counselor Greeney?
Yeah, could I please request hard copy of those minutes? I haven't got them.
A hard copy of the minutes?
Yeah, they're on a stump.
Oh, they... Yeah. They are here, but...
I'll pick them up.
They should've... The whole package should've been mailed to you. Did you not receive it in the mail?
No, I only received the agenda.
Madam President, I'll drop them off tonight.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll just grab them. Howie, I'll drop them off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, motion to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item seven is a petition for a special permit for a vehicle repair shop, 54 Commercial Street, DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Eight is a petition for a zone change.
To ordinance?
From... Send to ordinance. It's a zone change.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And then nine is also a petition for a zone change from BL to DR.
Received and sent to ordinance?
Received and sent to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay. My President's report is not too different. The mayor did send us a communication right before the meeting that was filed as a late file that I just wanted to... Just make sure I communicated with all of you about the City Hall parking deck. This was after the recent assessment by Ty and Bond. It has found that there are structural conditions that warrant restriction of vehicular access to several areas of the deck. So starting tomorrow, Wednesday, December 4th, city employees are no longer to park on the parking deck behind City Hall until further notice. There will be a limited amount of visitor parking spaces available on deck, as well as handicap parking. If you are an employee with a handicap package, you can park on the deck. For other city employees, including counselors, you can park at the municipal... There's two municipal parking garages, the Prue Parking Lot, right here on Dwight Street, or the Suffolk Street Municipal Parking Garage, which is behind us on Suffolk Street. So just wanted to make sure folks are aware of that. The other thing is that the city... Just a reminder, the tree lighting is this weekend, this Saturday. All of the things that start happening at the merry-go-round are at 3:00 PM. And then the festivities at City Hall are at 5:00 PM. And the lighting and the parade are at 6:00 PM. So hopefully you can be there and it's not too cold. And just a reminder about that open meeting law guidance that Jeffrey gave us at the last meeting, if you haven't signed it already and reviewed that, just to be sure to do that. And as far as I know, we will be setting the tax rate on Monday. I recognize that you still need to receive the information needed prior to that. And if we are not able to get that information in a timely fashion so that you all have the time to prepare, I'm prepared to have to reschedule and we'll just kinda see how that goes. It's not... It's not ideal. And I know that, you know, we have a lot of folks who are trying to get all the information needed and I'm just here waiting for the go-ahead. So just know that I won't try to spring any last-minute information on you and that, you know, if it's needed, we will have to move the date. Counselor Bartley?
If you're done?
No, you can go ahead.
No, only when you're done?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to raise a point of order very quickly.
Sure.
I understand that there's potentially a finance committee meeting scheduled for Monday prior...
Correct.
...to that tax adjustment meeting. And it's been potentially raised, at least at the last finance meeting, that potentially that would be an executive session?
Correct.
And my reading of the law shows no exception on point relative to putting that. So I would just strongly urge that the chair... And I've already... I talked to the chair about this already, be given a written opinion from the Law Department explaining exactly what the exception is that works for this. I'm not saying I'm right. I'm just saying I don't see it in one of the ten listed exceptions. So I think we need to really understand that, especially in light of the fact that this body's been dinged a few times already by the Attorney General's Office, so...
Okay.
Hopefully, we can do that.
Okay, was that...
No, I would... Say it, Patty.
Need a motion?
If...
Sure. Think we need a motion to have the Law Department...
Okay, I'll make a motion then to have the Law Department provide a forceful legal opinion to the Finance Chair.
As soon as possible. I don't normally like to do that, but...
Yeah.
And some meetings coming up.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yep.
All right, so... Sorry, Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, and I would remind my fellow council members too. We've been reprimanded several times already by the state. And as far as getting dinged, the next ding could be for $1,000 each.
For what?
So there's a ding.
For what?
For violating open meeting law.
Well, the goal is always to not violate open meeting law. So I want to make sure that the Law Department has heard the request from the council to make sure that we are abiding by open meeting law in having the executive session on Monday. Does that sound good? Attorney Bissonnet?
Yes, it does. We have a staff meeting at noon tomorrow to discuss that topic.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, great. Then we'll just... Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. And I would just note, with all due respect to the Law Department's opinions that they provide to us, we, as the counselors, are the ones that are obliged and obligated to follow that open meeting law. So if we're found to be out of compliance, it's on this body.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Jordan?
Just a quick question. When we're signing off that we've read the open meeting law and understand it and all of the implications of that, is that just the counselors that are going through that exercise? Or is this department heads?
Yeah. Members of public boards and commissions.
Okay.
This is... Follows up on... There was a meeting that the mayor hosted for all of the chairs of boards and commissions. So it's not just us.
Okay. But is it like the Law Department has to read those and sign off too?
No, those actually go to the city clerk. And then those are filed in the city clerk's office.
No, no, no. I meant...
Oh, sorry.
They are the individual attorneys in the Law Department also signing that they understand the open meeting law and filling out one of those forms. Because as I'm... One of the concerns that was raised is that there's misunderstandings about these interpretations. So I'm making sure that if we're signing off, that we understand that the Law Department is also signing off that they understand and that is it... If it's... Is the mayor signing off? Is the city clerk signing off? I mean, do we have... It's more than just, you know, volunteers sitting on the Board of Appeals.
Sure. I don't have the answer for that right this second.
No, no, but if you could just inquire...
Sure.
Because one of the other issues is like who's... One of the recent ones I pointed out was there hadn't been minutes filed, at least online, for some of like in OPED. They're overseeing, like clerking, to put all this stuff on for like years. And I guess my question is, who... There's paid staff that are actually helping these boards. And the question is, are they also signing off that they understand these rules? Because it's not really enough to just say, "Well, some unpaid Board of Appeal member is signing off." When...
We can look into that.
Yeah, the person who's actually in charge of making sure the minutes are done and completed and yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Anyone else?
Just on the motion?
Okay, so, on the motion to...
Oh, Rivera has...
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Rivera, thank you.
So, just because I'm not hearing it clear, there may be a meeting Monday or there may not be a meeting Monday?
I will let everyone know by Thursday.
Only because it's my birthday?
I know.
My kids want to sing "Happy Birthday" to me?
I will let you... Can I let you know by Thursday? Can I...
It's all about...
And I'm thinking about... No, it's not all about me because if it was up to me, this meeting would've never... This would've been handled a long time ago. But ultimately, it's...
Okay.
We're at a point where can we figure it out? Just because it would be good for my planning.
Trust me, there are a lot of people who are trying to figure this out right now. I'm actually spending like 35 hours a week on it, so... Okay?
There you go.
All right. Thanks. Anyone else? Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Nope.
Great. Thanks so much, everyone. That was my President's report. On the motion was to have the Law Department send a legal opinion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Awesome. I love it here. All right. Reports of committees. Number 10. Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that there be and is hereby appropriated by Transfer in Fiscal Year '25, $29,152 as follows. OPED Administrative Assistant to OPED Licensing Agent recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Devine?
Motion to pass the first reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading. Counselor, under discussion?
And what this is, is this is from OPED and a transfer from Administrative Assistant to Licensing Agent. The council had already did the transfer of the classification. So now they're just moving the funds into that new classification.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, so the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, shoot. Sorry. I was getting confused with ordinance. It's been a really long two days, guys.
Okay.
So, motion to pass the second reading and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the transfer.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you've passed it. Thank you. Item 11 is the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred a transfer of $49,915 from Capital Stabilization to R&amp;M Public Library. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Devine?
Motion to pass the first reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading, under discussion?
Yeah, this was... Maria from the library came in and she had been working with the mayor and the procurement officer. The library needs a new compressor and they've done it through purchasing. It's 11 years old. And just originally, we thought we would have the board... The library board come in and talk about this, thinking it would come through their board. But it really is a public building. And that was made... The council made it a public building in 2010. So it's merely just a transfer for repair and maintenance and getting that compressor ready.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything to add? Okay, so the motion was... Oh, yes. Counselor McGrath Smith?
I just wanted to ask what the impact on the capital stabilization fund would be if the $49,000 was removed.
I wish you had asked that of finance. Nobody asked that question. So I don't know if anybody here can answer that. The... Suspend the rules and see if anybody... The auditor or anybody else could answer that?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and allow the auditor...
Or communicate to us.
Or...
Or let us know.
Or just let us know.
Yeah, let's know.
I think I submitted the documentation that has the balance on there. I have... If you accept this for the library, it's 388-201 will be the balance. If you don't, it's 438-11680. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Okay.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I think it spares repeating that... You know, Counselor Lisi kind of really pushed for this and now the Mayor Garcia kind of funded it, definitely funded it. So it's important to have these things. It just makes these projects possible and non-controversial. So that's it.
Okay. All right, so the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass the second reading and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the $49,915 transfer.
Yes.
McGrath Smith? Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
That you've approved it. Thank you. Item 12 is the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that the city forester, DPW director, and purchasing director come into Finance Committee to discuss the urban forestry grant. Recommended that the order has been complied with. Counselor Devine?
Motion to pass the first reading.
Oh, you don't need to. Not this time.
And this was a forestry grant for $1 million. No match. And it's from the USDA Urban and Community Forestry. And what we have is a letter from... And it says, "The City of Hoyok was recently awarded an Inflation Reduction Act Urban and Community Forestry Grant from the U.S. Department of Agriculture in the amount of $1 million for improvements to Hoyok's urban tree canopy. This grant will be administered by the National Arbor Day Foundation as a pass-through entity for the USDA with the City of Hoyok as a sub-awarding. This project will implement recommendations from the 2021 Hoyok Urban Forest Equity Plan and 2023 Public Tree Inventory Analysis. The bulk of this funding will be used when... For contracted tree work and to address our list of priority tree removals and pruning. Additional activities will include contracted training and consulting services, equipment rental, and the Office of Conservation and Sustainability. And the DPW respectfully requests that we accept $1 million to fund these important urban canopy improvement efforts. And also, Counselor McGrath Smith was very instrumental in giving us a lot of information. And she was at that meeting. and she was at that meeting, so she may want to mention something that I may not have."
Thank you. Counselor McGrath Smith?
Yes, thank you. I, I think just to recap, there are a lot of questions around why with the money that we have been granted, nothing has yet been expended towards the grant. And what came out of that conversation was that the Purchasing Department is going through the process to better understand the federal requirements of such grants and how best to put out the bids and understanding how much money it will cost to do this work because the kinds of contractors that are willing to accept the increased burden of federal requirements are, are contractors that will perhaps expect a higher fee. What came back originally was way higher than what they expected, so they rejected the bids and now they're working to put it back out. And they're working on also reaching out personally to the contractors that they hoped would put bids in that did not the first round, which had not happened the first time. So hoping that that second round goes more successfully, but knowing that it takes six weeks for them to put it out and then hear a response back, it's this frustration that it's going to be February or March before we have any sense of if it's really moving forward. In the meantime, as we all know, there's a massive backlog of trees that need to be taken down or trimmed. So, and also that this funding can only be used for the environmental justice zone in the city. So that has impacts as well for us as we think about budget season and where our priorities are as counselors and where we want to make sure that we are providing the necessary funding for us to be able to respond to our tree issues across the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bartley and then Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, that's all very positive information. I was just hopeful that we, that the letter that the Finance Chair just read could be posted under the Forestry Department website, so when we get questions, we can at least have something for the public to refer to. And so I'll just, I mean, I don't have to make a motion to do that. Jeff, can you just do that?
Do it.
Yeah. Jeff, if you might just, thank you. We don't have to go on myself. Thank you. That's all.
Okay.
To Jeff. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, this order also again highlights our attention and the importance of addressing our tree issues in the city. It should be noted that the council passed previously a request for a report that we're waiting to see what is the DPW's plan for that 100 most dangerous trees that they have identified. And we look forward to getting that report so that we have a specific plan. To what extent these will be handled in-house and to the extent that we need to bring in contractors? What is the funding source? Obviously, we're blessed now and we're very thankful to have this grant. But overall, this is a serious problem that needs to be addressed, and it needs to be addressed on a rather quick timeline. You know, they're dangerous for a reason. And that's why we want to make sure that this is the judgment of our Department of Public Works identifying those that they find particularly dangerous. So it's not our opinion, it's coming from the people who are doing this day to day. So we look forward to getting that report and having a specific plan in place to fix it. We can't fund something to the extent that it isn't covered under this grant if we don't have a proposal before us. So I encourage, looking forward to the administration providing us that plan.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So the motion was...
Pass the first reading.
Nope. Just complied with.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Item 13 was filed by Counselor Devine that the City Council extend our thanks and appreciation to the Flex Squad for all they do for the City of Hoyok.
Be received and sent to, I think, Fire Department, Mayor's Office, DPW, and the Health Department.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay, item 14 is filed by Counselor Devine, and it's ordered that the City Council subsidize the revenue of the sewer enterprise budget from the tax levy in fiscal year 2025 by $927,778, and the remainder funded by sewer receipts.
Madam President?
Yes.
I wonder if I could suspend the necessary rules. There are several people in the audience. Through the finance of the City of Hoyok, the mayor's here, the assessors here, the auditors here, and Mary Monahan from the DPW are all here. And perhaps people might have questions or they might be able to give us an overview of this, this transfer.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow the mayor and present city officials here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Whoever it was.
I would, would anyone, who wants to kick us off? Anyone?
I can actually go over the form with you if you want.
Sure. Thank you.
So this form, the Schedule A2 that was provided to you is for the... Oh, thank you. This is a form that goes into the gateway to support the tax rate setting. So one of the things that they do require is that we do vote on any subsidy prior to setting the tax rate. Does everybody have the form? Do you want me to go through it? I'm happy to do whatever you like.
We haven't been provided any forms.
Is this, what?
Yeah, it should have been the order, actually. Do you want me to go?
Well, so I don't know if that was... I don't, looks like we're making copies.
It's not in our packet.
Jeffrey's making copies.
Please hold.
Mary, do you have anything that you want to talk about while he's making copies or you want to leave?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be good. Okay, so Counselor Devine's order is for $927,000 and some change. So I'm, I'm here to explain part of what that consists of. The Board of Public Works got these numbers on Friday. We had a meeting last night. We have a special meeting scheduled for this coming Monday. In the afternoon on Monday, we also have another work session with our financial advisor, Mark Abrahams, because we haven't reviewed these numbers, but I can explain a, a significant amount of them. And the big one is $827,000 is a result of additional fees associated with our service agreement this year. The contract, which we're in the final year of, when it addresses total suspended solids and BODs, that's the constituents in the wastewater that goes through the plant. So when they exceed a certain level, there's additional charges that are tagged on to our annual service fee. It's contractual language. So this year, the TSS and BOD levels were significantly high, which resulted in this $827,000 in additional charges as part of the service fee contract. And then there's another $100,000 in there. I think, Tony, you can probably explain that better. I see a couple of minor items where we didn't budget for it because we didn't know we had to. Banking fee, fees, there was a difference in the short-term debt service dollar figure that we were given. So again, come Monday, the board will be meeting. I can't speak for the board. You're looking at a level $7.50 sewer rate moving forward.
What was that number again?
$7.50, which is the current number. Again, the board has not voted on this. That number came from the Finance Department's.
Okay.
Okay, so Monday, we will have that official vote as to what we would recommend. You're at a stage in financial planning halfway through the fiscal year. I don't see any changes. That being said, we're going to be entering a new contract for next year at this time. So we'll have plenty to talk about at that point with respect to how costs might be allocated. If I may just...
Counselor Devine?
Depending on if we have that executive session in finance or not, I plan to call in the DPW and, and get all those numbers on Monday at 7:00. Sure. We're meeting at 5:30 and I'll be over for, with the other commissioners for your meeting at 7:00. Okay. 7:00 because the... That's executive session at 6:00.
Yeah, yeah, so executive session's at 6:00, regular special meeting, 7:00.
Finance is at 7:00.
Are you good? Over there? Are you good? Okay.
And I'd like to...
He's talking to himself.
Also welcome the treasurer here. Treasurer here is, as well, if he wants to add anything to this. Rory, we're just talking about the tax classification and the tax rate ahead of Monday's meeting, if you want to add anything, or if Deb from the Assessors Office wants to add anything, or if counselors have any questions.
Otherwise, we can refer it to...
Finance.
Finance, but, you know, just knowing that we don't have a very long agenda, I wanted to give you guys that opportunity at least.
Appreciate that. So if there's nothing else, I might come motion that we send item 14 of finance.
Where's the rest of the report? I thought we were supposed to hear from the auditor.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Question about Schedule A2 and...
Yep, yep. Sorry, I'm not trying to...
Yeah.
Easy to get distracted.
Okay. Because I wanted to ask also, you know, the budget for the DPW wastewater treatment plan was 9.95 million, and essentially, we're adding a million dollars here. If we want to get into questions, I can ask some, just preliminary.
Yeah.
Is this, this is for a prior year, right? We get the bill, this is, I don't know if Mary wants to tackle that, but this is something based on the loadings for the prior year? They did some sort of calculation, or is this for the current fiscal year that they're saying, based on your run rate for this year, it looks like it's going higher because something? And then basically, a, a cousin to that question is, did they give you a written report explaining what's going on with the, with the mass that's going there? Like, I'm assuming there are certain factors that are up, like we're doing X percentage more of this, or they're doing, it's either added chemicals or whatever is the case, that it's costing them so much more? And then is there any forgiveness factor in the contract on that? So if you, you could touch on that a little bit, Mary?
Sure. Okay, so, so it does reflect FY '24s. It, it appears in the true-up.
Okay.
The contractor submits a monthly report, which gives some of the lab results, gives electricity usage, other things like that. What you just asked for, cost of chemicals, that is not in the contract. They do not provide that. So the original contract language contained a formula, which, and this sounds silly, we had six boxes to pick from with respect to what do you want to guess the TSS and BOD loadings are going to be this year? So historically, again, most of us on the board have only been there in the last two years. Historically, we picked category number four. It's like right in the middle. So it, it's a result of the, the amount of rain in a given year. It's the result of mostly residential discharges, because your industrial users already are on a different permit, so they're already being monitored. So it accumulates at the end of the year. This is what the final TSS and BOD loadings are. And as a result of this formula, this is how much more you pay. It's allegedly supporting what you just mentioned, any, any additional costs associated with chemicals, electrical, all of those other things with this higher load going through the plant. I want to add to that, though, as we're preparing for the next RFP, the new contract will not contain these surprises in it. So we're in the final year of the contract, and if you recall, I shared with you back in, I believe it was last December, a draft report from our financial advisor, Mark Abrahams, who had done a five-year look back, and he actually went back further than five years, but because he did note that in the last 10 years of the contract, we have experienced a deficit as a result of these TSS and BOD loadings. But it's kind of like throwing something against the wall and seeing what sticks. But our next contract, we'll have more control over that and we'll be aware, hopefully in advance, of what the ratepayer will be expected to pay for.
Did, did they give you a report that justified the million, the $827,000 ask? Like, you know, this is our rationale as to what happened and, and why there's a difference? And related to that, is it, since it's not residential, I'm assuming this is some, driven by some industrial use? Is this involving Sunoco or anything?
No.
Anything related to that? Okay.
No, a, and again, we do get a report. We, we get a monthly report that shows what, what's being discharged. That's part of our EPA permit, and it shows the total TSS in the BOD. So it, it shows we're within our permit limits, but we have contract language that has us paying more because it exceeded an original limit that's like 19 years old. And so Sunoco, they, they have their own monitoring that the contractor verifies. So, so their billings are based on what's in their wastewater. So we already know what's coming from Sunoco into the plant, and if they're high in TSS and BOD or anything else, then that's reflected in the, the sewer fee that they get from the city. So again, like I noted, it can be a natural environment of things. It can be droughts, it can be heavy rains. There's a whole lot of factors that would go into excessive TSS or BODs.
Right, and you're absolutely right. It could be a number of factors, but they should, they're, we're paying them to run the plant, so they should explain what is, what happened. Like, they, they should give you a report that says commissioners, it was X, Y, and Z, and now it's up 827, and they just sprung this on you on last Friday? They, like, if they're giving a monthly reporting...
No, we, we've known this for three months.
Oh, you've known about it for three months?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. No, no, it's not, this is not, we, we knew that when the true-up came in. We, we, you know, we're, you know, we, we knew towards the end of the fiscal year that, you know, things weren't looking good, but it wasn't, it's not until the final true-up comes, and that's usually a September event with the contractor. And, and some of the challenges here, to be honest with you, are what's in that contract, the, the, the level of information that the, goes back to the original contract that the contractor's provided is, is required to provide the city. And, you know, lessons learned moving forward.
When did we report it to the auditor to that we could accrue for what is projected to be the $827,000 shortfall? Because I guess the question is, we're now presented with this last-minute request, and, you know, we have to make heads and tails of this between now and Monday, assuming that we're going to put this all together between this issue and there isn't just your issue. There's other issues on the general fund side we have to figure out together. But like, is this reported to the auditor?
There was, well, not to the auditor specifically, but it was reported probably three months ago when the true-up came in and we saw what that final bill was, yes.
Okay. But like, who, what becomes, like, do you tell the mayor, hey, we could have this $800,000 bill here that this isn't looking good? It looks like, based on last year's report? And I'm assuming you have a meeting with them and somebody questions their assumptions and that their math is correct on all these loadings? And I'm assuming Mr. Abrahamson helps you with that from his expertise or?
Yeah, there, there's no reason to challenge the numbers, because again, these numbers have to be verified by a lab. They're, they're coming out of a lab. It's not, it's not someone working at the plant that's, that's coming up with these lab results. There's a certified lab, because these numbers are also what's, what's shown to support the limit sets are in our EPA wastewater discharge permit. So challenging the numbers would be unusual.
Okay, if we, I'll stop here, but if we could just get from Monday, an explanation, some sort of like what happened? Like, normally, it's this, because we did increase the budget from 6.9 million to 7.6 million for the service fee for this fiscal year. And, you know, that's not an unreasonable sum, considering, you know, that's, it was more than a 10% increase in the budget.
So if the service fee, any increase in the service fee from one year to the next is, is a, is a reflection on the adjustment factor that's in the contract. You, you, you didn't increase the enterprise fund budget overall, because there was $100,000 that went into capital planning. Last year, the deficit, if you recall, was a result of some major infrastructure sewer line breaks. And this year, we were able to get ahead of that. We had the $100,000 that came from council last year. We had negotiated a reimbursement back from Veolia for work not done and/or consultants we had to hire as a result of that. That went into a, the Veolia budget that's under the control of the DPW Director, working with Veolia, and we got ahead of some of these breaks. So, so we, we made improvements in the system, so we're not here this year talking about those breaks, because we fixed them before they could become emergency responses.
Right. I guess the only other, but I'm just saying, what we allocated in the nine, the nine point, well, just call it 10 million, it's, it's basically 10 million that we funded. We did do an increase of 700,000 in the service contract, which is, what they're basically saying, as I understand what you're reporting, that the service contract needs to go up by 827,000, that that line item now needs to be increased, because the cost of the service contract is going to come up short, that we won't have enough to fund, that there's, they're basically saying we didn't pay them enough based on this. The, the last thing I want to...
Can I correct you there, though? Only because we're, we're, we're paying for what happened. We're not asking for this increase moving forward, because this coming fiscal year, the TSS and BOD levels may not be that. Again, 50% of the time, the TSS and BOD levels end up being below what that projection is.
Right. So what they're saying is that we miscalculated last year.
Last year, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And now you need another 800,000. Got it. The other thing I wanted to ask you about, though, was a hun, the, the $100,000 is for this year's budget or for, there was a shortfall in last year's budget?
The additional 100, that brings it up to the 900 and something thousand?
Yeah, for banking fees.
So that, that's what Tanya, the Board of Public Works, and Mark Abrahams, we haven't reviewed that yet. We just got these numbers on Friday. So I, I, I'm not in a position to explain that 100,000.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and maybe what we can do...
Madam Chair? Oh, hold on. I have, please wait, everyone. I see you, Counselor Greeney, but I also have Counselors, I have Counselor Sullivan first, then I have Counselor Bacon, Counselor Bartley, and then Counselor Greeney.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll make this brief. What Mary just gave us was a, a very complicated and technical explanation of what's going on. I'll cut right to the chase for you, is our sewer rate is still too low, okay? Despite, we can, we can have all the discussions we want about street sweep and everything else, and I'll give you one quick example. This is just, and it's not just Hoyok, right, that's facing this problem. This is going on throughout the country, but our little neighbor up to the north here in Hadley, just on October 7th, had to go through, they're facing a 33% increase in the cost of disposal of sludge. We have the same problem here and the same type of increases, over which we have no control, none whatsoever. This is a, a lot of things we're, we're trying to address in our new long-term sewer contract, how we can mitigate these things or lessen the impact, or even change and make some of this, these problems actual revenue-producing for the city. But we're going to, we're going to have to take seriously not, not only a, a big increase, I shouldn't say a big increase, but a substantial increase in the sewer rate just to keep up with what is going on in the envi, in, in the natural environment and also in the costs associated with the operation of the plant.
Thank you. I have Counselor Bartley and then Counselor Greeney. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I missed Counselor Bacon.
Yeah, Bacon first, yeah.
Thank you. I just have two quick questions. Of the 827,000 over the last 10 years, is this unusually high in the mid-range of the reconciliation to the actual or some other?
This is on the high side.
Is it the highest?
I don't know if it's the highest, going back to, to, through the full contract.
Just 10 years or the, or the time period?
It's on the high side. I don't, I don't want to say it's the highest, but it's definitely...
That you're aware of?
Yeah.
So it would be considered unusual, given all the variables that came together, that it would be this?
Yeah, we weren't expecting it, definitely, yes.
And then my other question is for Finance Committee, if there could be information brought to Finance Committee about other possible funding sources? My concern is that the tax levy is already really high, the taxpayers are getting killed, and if we're going to put another million on the tax levy, it's really bad. So I'd like to see if there's any other options that can be talked about relative to that. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, first of all, I, I know we want to hear from the Finance Chair, because he's been waiting patiently, so I'll, I'll, let Patty go first.
Okay.
And I'll go after Howie.
Apologies, Counselor Devine?
All I wanted to say is I appreciate everybody coming here tonight and the questions that are asked, but we will have a meeting on Monday at 7:00. We don't know yet if there's going to be an executive session at 6:00, but I plan on having Finance at 7:00 and having these people in, and I'm sure we'll have some questions then. So that's really kind of it in a nutshell. Anybody that's got questions tonight, by all means, ask them, but the, the object is to get it into Finance on Monday.
So you, I, it might have been just misspoken, but you said Finance would be at 7:00?
Yes. If the executive session is at 6 to 7:00.
Right, but then we may, but we might have a, a special meeting for the, for the tax rate?
That too, so...
Right.
Put it this way, Finance will be meeting either in executive session at 6:00 and/or for other orders after that.
Okay. Figure that out. Counselor Bartley?
Okay, I'll, I'll be very brief.
Madam Chair, I thought I was going to talk.
Yeah, how, 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 how we go?
Okay. Forget about me. You go ahead, Howie.
Just, just quickly, one question. Are we going to get a breakdown of the commercial uses, usage versus the residential usage in detail?
So, is that to me?
Of the sewer, of the, of the fee.
So we really...
850, 850, 850 grand's a lot of money. I'd just like to know, you know, if there's, you know, what the, what the commercial usage is... What the commercial usages as against the residential usage.
We don't have a difference, it's the sewer rate is the sewer rate, the only one that pays a difference? Is Sunoco, um, because there's, theirs is based on? Um, the constituencies and their wastewater. But everybody?
But there are, there are other, there are other businesses and oils that are preused.
Right now, the sewer rate, it's the same sewer rate for everybody.
Thank you.
I, I understand that, I'd like to know? Which businesses are using more or which usage is more? Because of the different uh, uh, chemicals that are going into the water, et cetera.
We can get a breakdown of that, but just so that you, it's understood, it's not necessarily? Coming from industrial discharges, there's a whole lot of other factors that play into the TSS and BOD.
Right, I understand that, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bartley?
Uh, yeah, uh, so I'm, I'm, I've been here for more than half a minute, this is the first time I've heard, heard the acronyms TSS and BOD. So I, I, I think we're going to have to get an understanding? Of why we're getting a TSS and BOD hit for eight hundred something thousand dollars in 2024 where I never heard of it. I never heard any of that stuff the last 13 years, so that's one, got to get an explanation on that. Number two, last, we, we have had minutes from the Board of Public Works since Counselor Devine was the chairman of the Board of Public Works. Why that stops, why these things stop, I don't know, and it just slips my pea brain. But can we just get that back up and running? Uh, on a consistent basis and just, we get our minutes from every other board? But the Board of Public Works and, and if perhaps if some of us who regularly read all the minutes? Perhaps we would have had understanding? Uh, that this was, that this was coming? Back in June? Or July when we got the minutes, so let's commit from the Board of Public Works to get our minutes? Get their minutes sent to this body on a regular basis. That, that's not hard, um, third, I thought the Enterprise Fund had a surplus. I, I, what happened? It used to have a surplus. Not more, no more, so, uh, and the last thing is, I don't think I heard anybody challenging the numbers. I, I, I know that word was thrown out there, Madam Chair, I, I don't think we heard that, I, I, I think what we heard is total dismay and shock that it's? We heard the numbers back in June at the Board of Public Works and now we're hearing it in December? At this body and so, okay, you gotta make a vote. Um, that's? Not the best way to manage things, uh, and lastly, uh? I, I'm of the opinion that yes, there are alternative ways to fund this. And perhaps we have to do something that I, uh, which should, which I wouldn't want to normally do. Uh, I'm not real keen on raising the rates because they, like I said, they just had a, we, it wa- it was a surplus last year, so I don't know what happened. But we, we did have a surplus. So raising the rates is something that's going to have to take more than a minute. But for this, if it's just a one-time deal? Um, for this eight hundred and twenty seven thousand, perhaps we have to? Use a nuclear option and figure out uh, the best way to do that as a one-time payment because I think we do have some options relative to that. But I need to know? At least for uh? 10 years, for, for a period of time anyhow, why is this happening this year? Does anybody know? I realize it's rhetorical, so? Um, but it, there's got to be some kind of report, something somewhere that shows? That this, uh, these acronyms have been an issue or not for a period of time before this. So we need to put that in perspective and I think that would be very helpful to have for finance.
Thank you. Counselor, um, Sullivan, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, maybe the auditor can help me or correct me if I'm wrong on this. As far as any surplus goes from last year? I don't believe there was a surplus. I, I believe that we appropriated? I wasn't on the council last year, but I'm going over the numbers. Uh, a million bucks or something to that effect and it wasn't all used. Right, and there was a few bucks, like 90 grand left over. Am I close to accurate there, Tanya?
So last year in 2024, we appropriated 1,039,680. And we did have a surplus in 2023, but because our um? Free cash was certified late? It ended up being appropriated in the next fiscal year and that was 96,708, but that was from 2023, 2024 is not closed yet, so? I don't know if there's a surplus in retained earnings or not and we won't know that until we go through the free cash certification process and file our Schedule A.
Right, but that's? That's a surplus we're showing now.
Last year.
Last year.
In 2023, there was a surplus of 96,708.
It's, it's not a real surplus, it's a?
Right.
It's a? Leftover from a? Slightly larger amount of a transfer that we, we made.
No, because it was from 2023, so from 2023 to 2024, you actually took on additional debt, right, which is going to increase your expenses. So this 96,708? That you see on this report right here, that was from 2023.
Okay, and?
It has nothing to do with that 1 million dollars that was from 2024 because that year's not closed yet.
Okay, and as long as? We're, we're having a lively little conversation about something that's going to be a big, big topic, uh? In the, in the coming months and the coming years. Uh, as far as acronyms go, here's a new one for everybody so they can hear it now if they haven't heard it already. PFAS, P F A S, alright? And this is something? Uh, we've got to start planning for, tough thing to budget for. But I can't stress enough what's, what's coming down there. And um, I'm sure? Mary, don't correct me on this, but I'll give you an example, the, the kind of measurements that the EPA is coming out with? Is the equivalent to? One drop of water in three Olympic swimming pools, alright? And these are the kind of things we're going to have to be addressing? In our wastewater discharge? And the things that we plan for potentially over the next 20 years and, and we've got to start? Building this into our sewer rate and planning for it in advance instead of sitting here and trying to react to it after the fact.
Thank you, um, I have?
Oh, I was just going to move this along.
Well, so what I was going to say is I have Counselors Jordan and Bacon? And if anyone who hasn't spoken would like to ask any questions first? Okay, I just wanted to make sure, and then after that, we can? Move things along, I told myself half hour.
Send it to finance.
Yeah. So Counselor Jordan and then Counselor Bacon.
Yeah, um, Counselor Bacon touches on a point that I think we need to also consider, which is? You, you might be wise to also consider funding this either through, you know, we're having a conversation now about? Some of these special purpose stabilization funds and? What's the future of those and as we look at this? And we also look at our main stabilization fund, that could also be a potential source if this is a? One-time type of cost, right, that normally? Um? When you look at what we have used for assumptions in this contract and under the new contract potentially going forward? We're not going to have the same type of dynamic. It might be wiser to use our reserves as opposed to? Hitting the tax levy. Um, one of the concerns I have about? Increasing the tax levy is, you know, that's going to be a direct cost to the public. And? We might want to seriously consider using reserve dollars, whether it's? You know, using up what's left in capital stabilization? Um, and using um, maybe the rest out of our main, you know, our main stabilization fund as a possible source. So we should have that as a potential uh, voting alternative. Again, mindful that if this is all going to be done on a short? Time window, I want to put these issues out there so that? Um, leadership can consider and I'm happy to have some conversations around those, but? Um, those, those also should be considered and obviously we don't yet know how actually 2024 is even performing? Because we haven't done a reconciliation of the prior year. Um, so who knows?
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, I just have um, one final question through the president to our auditor. So the question, um, or the point was raised earlier that we hadn't had? A request come through like this that? The revenue for the sewer enterprise budget would be subsidized? Through the tax levy? And isn't it correct that? That reconciliation has usually occurred during? The cash, the free cash reconciliation process? And any, if there's some years a loss, some years a gain? It gets all worked out on that cherry sheet? And if there was a loss, it comes out of the free cash, so our free cash is less? I believe that's where I've seen this rec- this, these numbers? Fleshed out rather than this? Uh, vehicle that we're talking about tonight, am I? Remembering that correctly, I'm?
The ret- excuse me, the retained earnings is what you're talking about, so that is what gets meshed out within that free cash process? But this is a direct um? Revenue deficit, so if you're looking at the form? If you look at the, the user charges? That's the estimated revenue that we're going to receive. So? It obviously is not covering our? Our current budget that we voted on, so that's why you're seeing this, we, this happened last year? And I believe it happened another year that I was here as well? That we had to vote on the subsidy.
Okay.
So, so it's just a, it's? It's just a direct impact of not earning enough revenues.
It's only come up rarely in this? Structure or in this area?
I actually entered this into the gateway, so I used that form. Um, I'm not sure what I submitted in previous years.
Okay.
But that's? We have to vote the subsidy to set the tax rate, so? There would never be a time where you'd have the subsidy that you wouldn't vote on it.
So in essence, we overstated it in the budget. And so now we have to make it match the budget.
Um? We didn't overstate the revenues because the revenues are based on the previous year, right, so in 2024? Our actual revenues, it says 9.3 million.
Right.
But I know that 691,000 dollars of that is from the previous year, right, so we can't really consider that as? We're going to be getting the same in 2025. Um, I can also share um, some information from the DPW? Which does have the usage, the estimated usage for um, 2025? And what they're expecting to bring in from Sunoco, which is 831,000 dollars? And I did want to mention that that may be where that hundred thousand dollars is coming from? Because? The Sunoco um? Has been paying less as the years have been moving forward, so you, we usually get around? 950,000, but this year they're um, forecasting 831, so that's? Probably the additional hundred thousand dollars that we're looking for.
Okay, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President, I wanted to interject to? Thank everybody that was here tonight and hopefully you can be? Uh, in the chambers on Monday and? All the city councils that had a chance to either ask their questions or comments. I certainly appreciate that, so I think um? We're a little ahead of the game now for Monday and I would ask that item 14 be? Sent, referred to finance, uh, board 12, 9.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to refer item 14 to? Uh, finance.
Yep.
Any? Anything else? Afraid to ask.
Don't ask.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, thank you.
Thank you.
We just spent rules coming. Anything we can suspend rules on? Want to combine some of these or?
No, no, this is, it's easy.
Okay.
Okay, item 15, uh? Is filed by Counselor Devine, um, order that there be a transfer of 19,584 dollars and two cents.
Can we suspend rules and take 15 and 16?
Sure. Is there a second? Um?
I didn't hear what the?
Uh, suspend the rules and take 15 and 16 as a package.
Okay, fine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And this is?
And so 16 is um? Oh, I'm sorry, uh, nine, so 15 is for 19,584 dollars and two cents? And that's um, sergeants and patrolmen to injured on duty? And that is representing seven officers?
Yep.
Um, and then 16 is um, a transfer of 7,562 dollars and 57 cents? Um, it's from captain, lieutenant and firefighters? Um, to injured on duty and that represents um? Three firefighters.
Make a motion that we pass that tonight?
Second.
Second.
Uh, the motions are made to suspend the rules and take final action tonight, um? All those in favor on that? Any opposed, okay, so?
Not opposed, just want to pass it off a minute. I like the box.
The new format there?
I like the new format.
Yep.
I can actually read it.
I take no credit for that.
Well, whoever gets the credit, then?
Madam Clerk?
Not me, okay.
The software?
I think it's going away.
Oh. It's Tanya, don't get too used to it.
Yeah, because I think it's interfering with the system, right?
Oh, no, so it's going to go away?
We'll figure it out, yeah.
It works for me.
It does look clean, I think, but?
Thank you, Brenna, yes.
I would, I would agree on that. Um, so uh, seven officers is for 15, uh, three firefighters is for 16. So um, Counselor Devine, do I have a motion to pass?
Motion to pass it tonight?
Motion, well, we need the?
First reading.
First?
Second.
We already passed the first, didn't we?
Oh, we did pass the first reading, so? Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Um, any other discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Clerk could call the roll.
Oh, yes, you're right, sorry, thanks. Uh, the clerk, call the roll if you vote, yes, you're voting for the transfers.
McGrath Smith? Yes. Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
No idea.
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Not in the roll.
Okay.
Out of the room.
Okay.
12 years.
Thank you, with that, you've passed? Those transfers? Um?
Item 11?
Do you want to maybe, I would entertain a motion to uh?
17, 18, 19? And we're going to send those to um? Finance on the 23rd of September, uh, December.
Okay.
Second.
Um, so motions been made and seconded to um, take item? 17, 18 and 19 as a package, item 17? Is filed by Counselor Devine, it's a transfer request of 20,000 dollars um? From firefighters to R and M vehicles. 18 is a transfer request um, for 250,000 dollars? From firefighters to overtime? And 19 is filed by Counselor Devine, it's a transfer request? Of 33,000 dollars? Um, from pay engineer and pay civil engineer to professional engineer services. Refer to finance?
On? Next meeting will be on the 23rd of December.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um? Item 20 was filed by myself, um, ordered that? Uh, to amend the approved city, city? It's supposed to be center city liquor license authorization? For an expanded area by including a? Geographical description for the added eligible area in the previously approved home rule petition.
Sure.
This addition is needed for final submission.
Second.
Received and sent to DGR.
Received and sent to DGR, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, 21 was filed by Counselor Bartley, order that DGR invited state delegation to a future DGR meeting? Uh, pursuant to Rule 9C? Um, refer to Rep Duffy, Senator Vailas, um, and copy to our administrative assistant.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 22?
We do 22, 23 and 24?
Sure.
Is that possible?
Yeah. Uh, motions been made and seconded to take items 22, 23 and 24 together as a package. 22 is a transfer request for 21,843 dollars and 57 cents? Um, from pay administrative assistant to pay revenue collections. 23 is a transfer request for 2,066 dollars and 40 cents? And that is from? Uh, professional office supplies to telephone use charges. 24 is a transfer request of 12,264 dollars and 44 cents? Um, professional accountant HPD? um professional accountant HPD to nutrition director, utility person, social work, uh, health services provider, driver, um, counsel and aging, uh, send to Finance?
Finance, 12, 23.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then just the late file. We have Item 25 is the UFCW um 1459 COA uh agreement.
Can send those to Finance with the other orders.
Which ones?
Second.
25, 26, 27, and 28?
Motion to suspend the rules, take take all together and ship order to Finance.
Thank you. Um, 26 is the PSA settlement agreement, 27 is the COA K, uh, 28 is PSA K, um, receive and send to Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then 29 is uh the communication about the city hall parking deck.
Motion received.
Motion to receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we have 30 is the last late file that was filed by Counselor Bartley, um, ordered that the mayor be requested to s- to act on the bond study from last year and put together a plan to demo the old police station. Send to Finance?
Send it, and refer to Finance, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, thanks, everyone.